Six o'clock regular meeting. Good evening, glad to see faces in the audience this evening and attending our meeting. And at this time, I would like to ask Commissioner Brown to give the invocation for the Board of Commissioners as we seek wisdom and guidance in the work that we do for the citizens of Aridale County.
Thank you. I have any father, Lord, we come to you once again, Lord, to thank you and praise you. We have spent a crazy week this week, Lord. We know your power. You give us this hot heat, Lord, and then tomorrow, as we were talking a few minutes ago, we're gonna have a cold front, it's gonna be eighty-something degrees, which sometimes that might feel like a cold front when it's been a hundred. But, Lord, we know you're in control, and you won't give us more than we can take. We ask you to continue to bless this board. We want you to give us what we need to serve this county, Lord. We are so thankful for the things that happened in Aridale County. We're one of the greatest counties on this earth, and we praise you for what you give us the knowledge to be able to do, Lord, and the ability to work together. And we ask you to continue to bless us and bless everyone in this United States, for us in Christ's name it is sake we do pray. Amen.
Amen.
Please stand for the clinch.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Manager Mull, as we look at our agenda, do we have any adjustments this evening?
Yes, ma'am, we have one adjustment, which is the removal of economic development from closed session.
All right, do I have a motion to approve the adjusted agenda?
Make a motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
I think you were unanimous on the agenda adjustment. And then going down through our agenda this evening, we do not have any presentations, no appointments, no public hearings. So that takes us right to the administrative matters. Manager Mull, if you will cover those for us, please.
Thank you. The first item was requests from the Wilkes-Airdale Volunteer Fire Department for approval of an application for funds from the Small Loan Program in the amount of $100,000 for a portion of a new tanker and to extend the repayment period to three years. There is a request from the Fire Service and Emergency Management for approval of Budget Amendment Number Six and to accept unsolicited Homeland Security Grant Funds passing through the Charlotte Area Security Initiative, or UWASI, to pay for a portion of an upcoming hazardous materials technician class. There was a request from Emergency Communications for approval to amend the American Rescue Plan Grant Ordinance and Approval of Change Order Number One for the Aridale County Viper Simulcast System Project to upgrade the three tower site generators from propane to diesel, and this is upon the recommendation of the state. And specifically in emergency situations, diesel operations and diesel refueling is more plentiful than propane. There was a request from the Health Department for approval of Environmental Health On-Site Water Protection Fee Changes mandated in Session Law 2023-90. This is something that we had great conversation about, and unfortunately, we have no say on this, not really in favor of it, but the changes have to be made, and the new fees go in place September first, so that has been approved by consent. Request from the Finance Department for approval of a contract with NJR Group Incorporated for the Solid Waste Entry Project and to authorize the county manager to execute the contract. A request from Aridale County Economic Development Corporation to amend the Economic Development Agreement for Fiber Works. They've had some delays in closing, and they're asking for an extension through December 31st of 2024. A request from the Aridale County Economic Development Corporation to grant an extension to Dura Supreme LLC in order to fully execute the Economic Development Incentive Agreement, and this would be an extension of roughly sixty days, which would extend through October the 18th of 2023. A request from Administration for approval of a real estate listing renewal agreement and also a motion to amend the conditions of the contract for an extension in the due diligence and an extension in closing, if necessary, for a fee to be paid to be applied towards the purchase price. There was a request from Tax Administration for approval of the July 2023 refunds and releases. And finally, a request from the Clerk to the Board for approval of the minutes from the meeting on August the 1st, 2023, with one correction to the invocation.
Okay. Thank you, Manager Mull, and I appreciate staff's time and dedication. And if you attend or watch our four o'clock, that is when we have a much more thorough discussion on this, and staff will present. So at this point, though, I'd like to ask for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'm sorry, Mr., did you include the consent motion for the changes to the resolution?
For the...
Resolution to the, for the Bluefield, when you...
Um, I did, but I can actually read it into the record if necessary.
That's fine, I just want, if, want to make sure that it was clear to everybody.
Yes, those two items were included in the consent, but if you'd like for me to read the resolution, I can.
No, it's just, it was the amendment to the resolution, that's fine if everybody's...
That'll be in minutes as well.
You read it, that's good.
All right, so a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Thank you, Commissioner Stroud, all in favor?
Aye.
We're unanimous on that one, thank you very much. And that takes us to item number nine, the announcements of vacancies. We have none listed at this time, no appointments, and then it takes us down to the unfinished business. Do we have any unfinished business as a board or staff have any unfinished?
No, ma'am.
None, okay. That's gonna take us to our public comment period, the second meeting of the month. And I see we have a few names signed up, and I will just read through our standard verbiage prior to that. The Board conducts a public comment period at its second regular meeting of the month, and the purpose of public comment period is to allow citizens to speak on matters related to the county government. Each speaker that is signed up is allotted three minutes and will be called to the podium by the chair in order of names appear on a sign-in sheet. Please state your name and address before beginning your comments. Comments are to be directed to the Board as a whole. Responses by the Board are at their discretion, but the public comment period is not intended to be question-answer period, but rather a time for the Board to hear from the public and take such matters raised under advisement. Citizens will be expected to be civil in their language, presentation, and not engage in slander or name-calling. Citizens should not discuss any of the matters which are closed-session matters, including but not limited to matters regarding personnel or matters which are made confidential by law. Speakers who have prepared written remarks or supporting documents are encouraged to leave a copy of such remarks and documentations with the Clerk to the Board. Amy, right there at the end. So at this time, I'm going to open the public comment period, and the first name we have on here is Michael Moorfield. If you'll please come to the podium and state your name and address, please.
My name is Michael Moorfield, I'm at 401 Fifth Creek Road, Statesville. I just wanted to come by and follow up with my last month. I came by and spoke to you guys, ladies, about election integrity here in our county and the need for Aridale County to become leaders in North Carolina. I heard back from one of you guys, the rest of you haven't heard anything, so I'm kinda disappointed. I want you guys to think about this. On Wednesday, November 6th, 2024, when you wake up in the morning, do you want Marxism? Do you want Marxism? It's up to us right here, we have to be leaders, we have to... There's so much stuff that went on. You guys can't possibly believe, we went to bed with the election settled and woke up with a dumping roll. There's no way possible, it didn't happen, this is the biggest elephant in the room. Eighty percent of Republicans believe there was election fraud. I think it's fifty percent, over fifty percent of independents believe it, and thirty percent of Democrats believe it. Now, I got 250 signatures from people, I went down to the, to the public, Fourth of July down in Troutman, to the parade, acted like a fool and asked people, I wasn't really a fool, I was doing it on purpose because I feel like we need to do this. People of all parties, genders, faith, and everybody, I'd say sixty to seventy percent of them signed my petition wanting paper only and no machines. Now, you say, well, we got a good election system here in Aridale County, I love Susie Jordan, she's great, but she does what she has to do with what she's got to work with, you guys give her a good system. But the problem is, our system is sixty percent accurate for fraud. I can show you documentation on that if you want to see it. So that leaves forty percent chance. I don't want my vote digitized, okay? I don't want it digitized. I know we got paper ballots, once it goes in that tabulator and it slides in the tabulator, it's digitized forever. Now, there's also, I was reading yesterday, and I sent you guys, I followed up after the meeting, I only heard from one of you guys, thank you, Mr. Halt, you did respond back. I put down everything that we talked about in my portion, I didn't hear anything back from you guys, nothing. So anyway, there, I read, I sent you another one this morning about five o'clock when I woke up, that actually, there's a system that connects phones, cellular phones, AT&amp;T developed, to these machines. Now, I talked to our state House Rep here in Aridale County, he's never been able to get inside of one of these machines, never. And once it goes in there, when, if we don't go to paper ballots, if we do it, and so Rowan County hears, Aridale County did it, they'll be like, hey, that's a great idea, we should do it. And then what if Davie County hears about it? Hey, we should do it. Before you know it, we got paper. France does it, they vote thirty million people, now we got three hundred people, million in the US or more, but they do it overnight and they get it done. We can do this, we can get off of these machines. Once it goes in that machine, you can, early balloting, what's Al Capone, one of his famous tricks when he controlled the mob in the city, is he would buy out the politicians, the law enforcement, the judges, he would buy them off. And one thing, his main trick was early voting, he would know how many votes he had to steal and cram in the box. So, Aridale County, we had a great election, a secure election, you guys all got voted in, I'm very happy with you guys for the most part. The problem is, is, it's just, it's open to manipulation through other counties and through this system, these systems. Why do we need a system to count and do a vote? I went to the Republican Convention. Now, they were gonna vote for the chairman of the convention, so they decided to go to an app on the phones. We're supposed, it'd take twenty minutes to vote if you did it by paper, but no, we did it on this app. We were there four and a half hours and never voted on anybody. We voted on the chairman, and Michael Watley is the chairman, of course, he's done nothing about it. So I'm not happy with the Republican Party because they should have done a better job. But anyway, I just want you guys to look at it and take it serious, there's a lot of people wanna, want something done, they want an answer to this, and we're not getting it, and that's, I'm done, thank you for listening to me.
Thank you.
Glenn Sullivan, 162 Rushing Water Lane, Troutman. Good evening, I'm here this evening to voice my concern with the $64.9 million spending increase and the resulting property tax increases. This increase is hurting many of the residents of the county. Just look at the comments from your constituents on several media, social media websites, you'll see there are elderly that are wondering if they're gonna be able to make their payments. In a lot of cases, this has doubled their, their tax payments. And remember, there's a large amount of Americans today that cannot even afford a $400 emergency, and they're getting hit with a $1,000, $1,500 additional tax increase. Many of your constituents are senior citizens on fixed income and low to middle salary earners. They have been battered by the high inflation we've had for the last two years, as well as the increase in energy costs going on right now, and the rise in housing costs. Now, due to the unprecedented rise in county spending, we now have significant increases in property tax. Small businesses and renters will not escape this increase as landlords will have to recoup property tax costs. These increases are occurring at the town, county, and fire service levels. It's really unacceptable to place burdens on seniors and low-income earners that result in choices to pay taxes or pay for medication or food. They may not have funds to vacation. Worst of all, the increases could result in them having to sell their homes. There are a number of areas that should have been considered instead of breaking the back of the taxpayer. I did send an email before the, before the vote on the budget. I did receive some response, but I was not really, I didn't believe it covered what I had, I had stated. Anyway, the Commission should have used the $11 million surplus from last year to mitigate the huge rise in property taxes instead of building the unassigned reserve well over the eighteen percent minimum. Emergencies extend to citizens, too. As a matter of fact, six million of that was encumbrances that were pushed to this year. So this was money that was, that is now being spent that was planned for last year. The county manager proposed $3 million in investment earnings, even after seeing the investment income this, the end of this particular year, of over $6 million. There's really no reason this year's budget should be that much lower in investment income, especially with the increase in the unassigned revenue, the capital plan, and the significant size of the, the operating budget. I'm all for an apprentice program, however, I thought the current unfilled positions would be used for the apprentices. This should have resulted in a reduction in the FTE payroll for the apprentice positions, which I did not see in the budget proposal. Or is the county doubling up on the positions by adding the apprentices? I thought it was a replacement for some of these hard-to-fill positions. The increase in the cost of Jennings Park, very confusing, as shown in the Capital Improvement Plan comparing the 2223 budget versus this year's 2324 budget, was an increase over $12 million. $6.5 million was moved from the unassigned reserve in '23. How much of the $15.4 million in the 2324 SIP was gonna be needed? The GMP-1 showed a contract value of eleven and a half million for all phases. So there's all kinds of money, very confusing, and I think it's worthwhile that you tell the citizens not only how great Jennings Park is gonna be, but what the cost is gonna be, because it's very confusing. The county has strategic goals, one of them being retention of employees. Yes, this is critical to ensure the best services at the most economic cost. However, the nine percent increase in wages address pay benefits as a eight percent reason for leaving. Eight percent of the people who left said it was because of pay and benefits. How's the county addressing management at ten percent reason for leaving and work environment as four percent reason for leaving? It's easy to take money from the residents, but what is management doing to fix their own, own problems? So, in the end, I think this $60 million increase on the backs of the taxpayers, especially the low earners and the fixed, was, was very ill-advised, and I think it's gonna, you'll see a payback on that because I don't think citizens are gonna be able to take losing their homes or paying taxes over medication or vacations. Thanks for your attention.
Thank you.
Good evening, Tom Snyder, 237 Sundance Circle, Statesville. First, I just want to say, I am blown away that this meeting is moving along the way it is compared to where I was last night. But I just wanted to, Ms. Mull's mentioned earlier in pre-agenda, the I Voted sticker contest. You know, we're working with the Board of Elections, and they do a great job over there, and they're very passionate about getting coverage on this and getting it out. Ms. Trent put it out to the school board last week at the meeting, I put it out last night in public comment, and we're just trying to get as many people on, on board with it and get the information out to people and get the word going. So I did leave some copies over with Amy to pass out, I don't, I'm sure you probably got them by now, but just, Board of Elections does a great job, they, they put a lot of time into putting this contest together, and the pamphlet has all the information on it, the overview and what, what they're looking for. So just wanted to announce it publicly again, so this way, hopefully they get some traction on it and get a lot of participation. Thank you.
Thanks, Tom.
My name is Jack Benyon, I live at 263 Beaton Path Road in Morrisville. First, I once, first, I once again want to thank you all for not only listening to our issues concerning the short-term or vacation rentals, but also responding to these issues. And I want to thank you for putting up with our group at times, I am sure it has been a challenge. SB 255 is now in the House for approval, many of us have requested it be amended so that you have more control over your spending, especially for much-needed first responders and inspectors. I know that you will be appointing a tourism authority in conjunction with this bill. I would like to offer any help needed and throw my name in the hat to possibly be part of that commission or committee. After sitting through an open House meeting last night on the Horizon 2045 Plan, I need to thank you all for your work on that also. It just seems a shame that there's no way to slow down the growth to keep it more manageable, especially where the infrastructure is concerned. I thank you again for your time and support.
Thank you, Jack. And that concludes our public comment period, we'll close that out, and we'll continue with our agenda this evening. That takes us right to our Commissioner's comments and updates. Anyone want to kick us off this evening? Do we have any comments or updates? Any burning desire, anything to share?
I just wanted to ask everybody to be cognizant, school started, and send plenty of prayers out for kids, parents, teachers, administration, for a great year. Tell people to slow down when around their school buses.
Yeah, exactly. It's hard to believe, but school's kicking back up, but it is indeed.
Yes, we saw it in Troutman yesterday, traffic was backed up two miles in Troutman, and so, you know, I feel your pain with the, the growth in this area, because I grew up here, and I went to South Aridale, and I'm gonna tell you, we didn't, we didn't have any problem, we didn't have stoplights in. But, but I do say about the school, the school buses, it's not a suggestion, it's stop. You know, we have this problem, those stop signs mean stop. And I was talking to the school board about how many people run these things, I would have thought in a year's time, we're talking about four or five, but we're talking about 270. time, we're talking about four or five, but we're talking about 270. It's just ridiculous. Somebody's going to get killed, and then it's too late. And these are our kids, our precious little kids. So, you know, we've got to, we've got to do something about that, which we'll have to get onto our sheriff and tell him to put him in jail or something. But anyway, we're also working on the fairground. The fair's coming up here in two weeks, I guess. So we want everybody to come out and have a fun time, safe time. But we are working on fairgrounds, a couple of things going on there, and hoping, get started one of these days, tearing down some of the old buildings, putting some new buildings up.
Do you have any thoughts? All right. And it was kind of a little bit of a slow, August sometimes isn't quite as busy. You got one more thing?
No, I want to write this down. Brad has nothing to say. Okay, all right.
Save it for a special occasion. Manager Mull, would you like to give a report or share any comments or thoughts on feedback on?
Absolutely. I do have a few comments, and I'm going to kind of piggyback some of the comments that were already made. Mr. Benyon, 2045 Horizon Plan, I thank you for going to that and participating. And I just want to remind everyone, it is on our website. It is important that everybody take a look at that. We are still receiving comments until September the 12th on that. So that is kind of the picture of, based on all the feedback that we have received and all the input from the community and various stakeholders and organizations regarding growth in our county. And that's important. We challenge everyone to take a look at it, have input, share your comments. So the comment period is still open through September the 12th. You can see the plan on our website and all of the meeting notes, everything that's been presented to all, to everyone in all the public information meetings. It's there on our website. So I just want to encourage everybody to take a look at that. It is important. Mr. Snyder, the sticker contest for Board of Elections, that is another great thing that our Board of Elections office is doing, and they're opening that up for grades K through 12 for the children to design and get involved in our election process. And they have an opportunity to design a sticker that they're going to hand out during the election, the I Voted stickers that everybody wears with pride and honor. So this year, it's going to be designed by one of our children in our community. So I think that's a wonderful thing. So it's very important for everybody to participate, get involved. I commend our Board of Elections office and that board coming up with something like this. It's so creative to get our youth involved in the election process. The other thing is the free photo ID cards. This upcoming election, you will have to have a photo ID, starting with our 23 municipal elections. If you do not have an appropriate government-issued photo ID, you can have one made at the Board of Elections, and it's free. So contact them, give them a call. There's information on our website as far as what you need to do in order to get that free photo ID. But we just want to make sure everybody is aware that we're issuing those for free if you don't have a driver's license or passport or something of that nature.
I'm sure they're going to require documentation and paperwork. So that's where the call and the information, make that contact before you just show up at the Board of Elections to have your picture taken. It's not just a school day photo.
No, you do have to verify, verify things. So make sure you take a look at our website with what's required or give a call to make sure you bring all the appropriate documentation.
Anything further on that?
That's all. No, ma'am.
All hearts, please.
Oh, the tax scam. I even have it written here, Commissioner Haupt. We are experiencing an issue in our community where residents are receiving notices in the mail regarding that they have to pay or there will be forced some type of enforcement action regarding taxes. This is a scam. Unfortunately, we have had some of our citizens that have contacted that 855 number, given their credit card over the phone, and thousands of dollars have been charged to their credit card or drafted from their bank account. Please, please, please do not respond to those. It does sound legitimate. If you call the number, it says "Tax Office." And, but do not, the tax office will not do that. You need to contact the tax office. Contact the local tax office, not the 855 number that's on whatever letter you get in the mail or whatever telephone call you receive. Contact the local tax office or go to the local tax office. It is a scam. We seem to have this every year, and this year is no different. We've issued a press release. We're trying to get information out there to our community. Please reach out to those individuals that maybe don't have someone helping them with their bills or something like that, and just make sure that they know they may not have access to social media. They may not get the local paper or something like that. And please make sure you share this with your loved ones and let them know that there is a tax scam that's going on. And unfortunately, we've already had citizens that have fallen victim to it. We have given their information to the sheriff's office, and they're going to try to do whatever they can. But we just ask that you contact the local tax office or go see them, and they will help you. Please don't call an 855 number and give out your credit card information.
Sorry to hear that, but everything seems to have a scam attached to it.
It does here lately. Yes, ma'am.
Anything further?
No, ma'am.
Board will heart-free on that one. Okay. We did have a closed session with nothing to report out. It was on personnel. That takes us to the end of agenda. Have a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion.
Oh, all in favor?
Aye.
We're unanimous and adjourned.
We're setting records on.